Community, your region, the world. Thanks for joining.
He's here like all day.
Good afternoon. It is Monday, April 28th at 3 o'clock. This is the Moscow City Council Administrative Committee. My name is Tom Lamar. I'm the Chair of the Commission. And with me are county, or City Council members Wayne Kraus and John Weber. And City Supervisor Gary Redner. And it looks like everybody else is already coming up here too. So that's good. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the April 14th minutes.
A move we approve?
Yep. Check it.
Okay, we have all three of us agreeing with those minutes, so they are approved. The second item on the agenda is Rendezvous in the Park 2014. The request for a beer garden in East City Park with Dwight Curtis.
And that's it? Do you have any questions?
That's okay. All those in favors?
Nothing has changed, right? From last year?
Nothing's changed. Nothing's changed. It's just a different year. So as in the past, they're asking for the entire area there to be fenced off. And as a beer garden, has been no troubles with the law regarding alcohol in the past. And that's it.
That's it?
We've been doing this for a few years. Any questions? And any, I guess, John would like Paul to come up and say something. Paul Kolkowski with the Moscow Police Department. The microphone is right there.
The Police Department has no problem with this, Paul?
No, sir. No problem. In the past, for the last three years, we haven't had a problem with it.
I've been very supportive of this since the very beginning. I'm happy that we were able to make this work. It's a lot better than the little clustered garden that we've had on the side. And this enables people to get, have beverages and sit at their places and watch the music. It seems to be working very well.
You hire your security as one of our police officers?
Yes, we do. My name's Darrell Faircloth. I'm co-chair.
Sorry, I didn't.
This year. The only, there is a change in terms of days this year. We dropped our Thursday show, so we're on Friday, Saturday. And then Sunday, we are, we have engaged with the Washington Idaho Symphony. So we're going to up the ante a little bit on our Sunday show. We're going to leave the big stage up. And we'll keep one vendor for that evening, as well as the beer and wine sales. And then have the Washington Idaho Symphony perform on the big stage. And then we have Hog Heaven Big Band opening for them.
Okay.
So Sunday's changed a little bit. Thursday hasn't been a moneymaker necessarily in terms of attendance. So it's something we're going to try this year. We may go back to Thursday next year, but...
So Darrell, who are the bands on Friday and Saturday?
Our headliner for Friday night is Carolyn Wonderland. She's a blues guitar artist. Opening is Sam Sliva out of Austin, Texas. So he's kind of Americana sound. And then Dish Walla is our headliner on Saturday night. And a band called Little Hurricane out of San Diego will be the opener. And then we've had our showcase just a couple of weeks ago, so we have those artists onboard as well.
That'll be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just a quick clarification. Hadn't heard about the Thursday deal, so the ordinance, or not ordinance, yeah, the resolution, we'll change the dates on that to eliminate the Thursday.
Okay. That sounds good.
Nothing else is changed.
John?
I think we ought to just put it on the consent?
Yep. I'd like to see us move this forward to consent with that correction that Dwight just pointed out.
Mm-hmm.
Terrific. Well, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darrell. It'll be fun. It'll be a nice weekend.
Guys, have a great afternoon.
It's one of the best in Moscow. Agenda item number three, the Palouse Pride Festival. Approval request for beer and wine garden for East City Park with Dwight Curtis and Kathy, but she doesn't, Kathy's not here.
Yeah, that's okay. This one, just like the last one, there's no changes. This is on August 19th, 12 to 4:00. In their case, they do pay for police officers. And as you can see on the map, it's not a very big beer garden. And there's also been no issues with the law in the past on this since they've started their beer gardens.
Okay.
Yep. As long as these continue to go on without any issue, I see no sense in changing it.
So we'll move this forward to the consent agenda as well, Gary.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number four, Americans with Disabilities Act, also known as ADA. Transition Plan for Pedestrian Facilities in the Public Right-of-Way. Elisa Stone. And I guess Gary's going to provide backup on this.
I'm merely backing up, yes.
Okay.
So today I'm wearing my compliance hat.
How come you're, on here it says Stone, but your last name is Truly Anderson?
We screwed it up.
Yeah.
We took this off last fall.
On last fall. Okay. So I'm just being clear.
Behind.
Yep, okay. I read it this way, but then I realized that's not correct, so, sorry about that.
So as I said, today I'm wearing my compliance hat. And that is making sure that we're in compliance with federal regulations. And ITD came to us back in 2012, which is the Idaho Transportation Department, to make sure that...
I didn't think that would work.
So the woman behind the curtain has now been exposed.
Don't pay attention.
Don't pay attention to our wizard.
Okay. So I'll briefly start over.
Sorry.
Today I'm wearing my compliance hat, and that is for me to make sure that we're in compliance with all of the federal and state regulations in order to continue to receive federal and state grants. And so Idaho Transportation Department came to us back in 2012 and said, "You must have a transition plan for public facilities, or for right-of-way in the public facility under the ADA in order to continue to receive grant funds." And at that point, I did a lot of research and looked at some other cities' ADA plans and didn't really want to create the wheel from new, so, but we found a lot of good examples and pulled together different things that would work well for us. And so the document that you have before you today is the American Disabilities Act Transition Plan for Pedestrian Facilities in the Public Right-of-Way, which is really our sidewalks and our pass systems. And the curb ramps need to all be ADA accessible. The undertaking of this has been quite in-depth because it's really, in order for us to bring forth and have everything within ADA compliance, it's going to take us several years and millions of dollars. But this will be a working document, and through time, we will eventually be able to have everything completed. Or, it doesn't mean that we have to have everything in compliance, but we have to provide accommodations. And so the process that we went through is, I originally drafted a document that I thought would be something that our engineering department, our administrative department would want to work with. And then I worked closely with Les and Kevin on molding the evaluation process for preliminary evaluation and then a detailed evaluation on how we could go through that process and take a look at each of our facilities in the public right-of-way. And engineering developed a cost estimate for what it would take to bring all of those facilities in $2,013 into compliance. We then went through, developed our public input process, and we started having meetings and putting the document out for presentation. We had our first meeting back in September of 2013, and we had an open house type meeting in the mayor's conference room downstairs. And then it was also presented to Poverty on the Palouse Forum, where we had a large gathering of social service organizations on December 18th. And then on February 4th of 2014, staff, a couple other staff, Stephanie and a couple other people, went over to Disability Action Center. And they had had an open meeting and invited several organizations. And we also had several people that use our facilities that need the ADA accessibility. And so throughout those three different public meetings, we took in a lot of questions. And mainly, it were comments about places where people had difficulty getting around. And a lot of those had already been taken care of through the program that Kevin did previously with the Task Force. What was that called, Gary? It slips my mind.
The Mobility Task?
Mobility Task Force, yes. And so a lot of the places that needed upgrading or had issues had already been documented, and the Street Department had taken care of a lot of them. And some of the people that came to the meetings to talk about that weren't aware that they had been taken care of. And so most of our comments were, "It would be a lot easier if this was this way or this was that way to get around." And a majority of them weren't when there was inclement weather. And there's really nothing we can do about some of that. And we do have a lot of topography in Moscow where things are never going to be really ADA accessible. For example, the Sixth Street Hill. But what we do, what we will do for any citizen that lives in town is if they happen to buy a home or somewhere in a neighborhood that has hills or whatever, you know, we connect them with public transportation, and we'll do whatever we can to help them get to wherever they need to be. Or we'll go through a mapping system with them and show them the areas that do have the ADA accessible routes. And so there's a lot of other ways that you can go about meeting accommodations other than redoing all of your infrastructure in places where, you know, it's just not going to work. In Exhibit A of the document, we have the different guidelines and elements to doing a detailed evaluation. And these were all developed through our engineering department. And then they also developed a cost estimate only for what it would take to upgrade all of our ramps and sidewalks and also the intersection signals. And so the total cost that we came up with in 2013 was $24,305,000 to upgrade all of the facilities that we have in place right now. And that's a very rough estimate. And they estimated also that it would be $3,000 to $5,000 inflation increase per year.
Say that again?
3% to 5%, I'm sorry. 3% to 5% inflation increase per year in construction costs that this number would increase as we went through.
And if I may?
Yes, please.
Anticipated to be finished by 2022?
Yes.
At what rate? At what rate of spending?
100%. Completed by 2022.
Which is unrealistic, and no other city does that either. But you have to document this, and you have to make sure that you're continually working toward that goal.
Oh, excuse me. Are there any, is there a penalty if we don't achieve the goal within that period of time?
No. No. It still goes back to providing a reasonable accommodation. And that's what we'll do. And we're not the only city. In fact, we probably have better facilities than a majority of the cities in Idaho.
I should wait till you've completed all your presentation, but I've got a huge stumbling block that I'm, as you can imagine, that I'm stumbling over here. Is this mandated?
That we have it?
Do we have to continue to work towards this?
Yes, it is.
Mandated by whom?
The Idaho Transportation Department requires that you have a plan and that you continually work toward bringing your facilities into compliance.
Said that, so...
But the level at which you continue to do that is always controlled by financing or funding.
Because the, obviously, to spend $24 million and supposedly have it done by 2022 is like, how much would Tyler Palmer like to have? He could $24 million for our city streets, for crying out loud.
And I need, I'm sorry, I need to kind of step up a couple of direction, feedback. What we're saying is that we'll have all of our facilities evaluated by 2022 and know exactly what we have to do to upgrade everything to that ADA level. Does not mean that we will have them all fixed by then. But they give you a certain amount of time, or you, they don't give it to you. You have to state, "How long will it take you to do your preliminary evaluation?" And then from that point, "How long will it take you to do a full design or an estimated design on getting the rest of those facilities into compliance with the ADA?" So preliminarily, we know which of our curb ramps were built prior to, you know, having the truncated dorms on them. You know, that's documented. We have an inventory of that. But not all of the sidewalks have been documented as far as, you know, the width and the length and whether or not they have an abrupt edge that's buckled up or those types of things. A lot of it you can tell from a Google map, but some of it you can't. So that detailed evaluation will go out then and look at those areas that we couldn't tell from the preliminary evaluation whether or not they were in ADA compliance.
And the construction standards piece that the council just approved a few weeks ago, of course, accounted for these designs that we're talking about here. So we're not looking at anything that contradicts.
Yeah, that's new construction.
Right. One document doesn't contradict the other.
Yeah, they'll be built, those construction standards were up to ADA compliance.
So they match what's discussed in here, too.
Now, in some of our existing areas, we may not have room to put in a wider sidewalk with the new design guidelines. Topography may limit us. You know, the prior design of a neighborhood, those types of things. For existing infrastructure, you just do the best you can. And you document that. And that's really what it's all about.
So in other words, if we're trying to figure out accessibility up and over the Sixth Street Hill, with that slope, we might be looking at a different route, say, up Third Street and around and accommodating people that way on a different...
And with that, we also developed a scoring matrix to, if a, you know, grievance or a request for accommodation was brought forth to us, where would it score within the scoring matrix? If we had several requests, we would have to rank them and move forward with them as we could afford to do that. And so that scoring matrix is also included in this plan. And there's a summary of it on page B3 of B4. That, again, was also developed by the engineering department. And of course, your public safety and security facilities are, you know, higher on the list. Bus stops, areas where we have clients who, you know, Disability Action Center, some of those other types of services where persons with disabilities frequent and need to get to on a daily basis. If we have a high level of pedestrian use, of course, you know, a snow route is a priority in the winter. So there's different, you know, there's a different scoring criteria that we use for different types of facilities. And so as we move forward through the plan, we had already adopted the resolution, which named Stephanie Claus, our city clerk, as the ADA coordinator. And we also went through a process of adopting a request for accommodation and a request for grievance. And our goal would be, excuse me, that we could resolve any questions that we had or requests through a request for accommodation. Our goal is not to have to have a grievance. And so, you know, with each of those requests that come in, we would like to be able to move through that process smoothly and be able to accommodate the best we can, knowing that there may be a situation that would, you know, come through as a grievance. But we have a process set up in this document to handle both of those situations. And so those forms are in there. And we have taken public comment, or had it open for public comment, for over 120 days. It's been available on the website. It's been distributed to multiple locations throughout the city. And we have not had any additional public comment through the website. We've had a few questions come through, or, "Why isn't there a sidewalk here?" "Why isn't there, you know, something here or there?" And as I said, a majority of those have been directly linked to when we've had snow and water and rain, or maybe the, you know, the storm drains on the corners are plugged or something from, you know, water flowing downhill or whatever. So there's been really no, no other public comment. And I went out and met with a few people directly. They've asked, we've asked, had people ask for some maps showing us where we do have our ADA facilities so that they can take those routes. And so we've been providing those accommodations as we've went through this process. So we're at the point now where we feel like we've put together the best document we can to cover all of our bases. And the federal guidelines are still actually in draft form and have not been adopted by the Federal Highway Administration. So we're actually going to be going ahead and moving forward with adopting their draft guidelines. I've been being told for a year and a half they were going to get approved the following week, and I continue to check, and they still haven't. So we're working with draft guidelines that we'll be adopting, and I will continue to monitor that. With an adoption of those draft guidelines for pedestrian facilities, then we can go ahead and move forth with adopting this plan and putting it into place. And so what I have brought forth today is the two resolutions that will adopt the draft guidelines, and we'll go ahead and adopt the plan. As it reads, I've met with the new City Council members individually this year. I think we all three met a few months ago. So this plan's been brought forth in draft format to you, and I documented in here on three or four different occasions. And so I'm hoping that any questions, you know, or any additional information we've already put into the plan or brought forth to you, and we, you know, we can continue to take suggestions. I do know that one of the additions that I'll be making to the plan upcoming is taking a look at our public transit bus stops. And many of the new ones where we have bus shelters are ADA accessible, but some of the ones that just are a bus stop are not. We have one that stops mid-block, and that's really not where you want to have a curb ramp in, because you don't want to encourage people to come off the street onto the curb to get on the bus. So we've got some things that we need to look at. And so it'll continue to be a working document, and we'll continue to make additions to it. And we will continue to update the Appendix E. We did an inventory of sidewalks and pathways that we had constructed between 2002 and 2012. That was approximately 85,000 linear feet of sidewalk.
Wow.
Which, you know, put a good dent in this. We've mapped all of those improvements. We have an inventory of the existing curb ramps and their statuses. And then we're also tracking what projects we have approved grant funding for right now. And as of last week, we had grant funding that has been approved for 8,346 more linear feet and 64 more pedestrian drops that we'll be installing to make them ADA accessible. We've got one city-funded project that's underway on Hatley Avenue. And we have an application in process to the State of Idaho, ITD, for additional curb ramps, which is also on the Public Works Agenda today. The next step, too, after the adoption of the plan, is we'll probably hold, I don't know if we'll do an all-staff or department training, well, that's yet to be decided. But we need to make sure that all staff's aware of this plan, so if they're asked questions or whatever, they know how the Request for Accommodation and Grievance Program works and who they should refer them to.
So before us today are two resolutions. One, to adopt design and standards and guidelines. And the other one, to adopt the plan for, how are we going, for making this stuff happen. How would you two like to proceed, or...
I think that with the project that you presented, it gives us a roadway to move ahead. You've broken it down into its component parts so we can, or the staff can monitor what's going on. And you've also left enough leeway in there. The changes can be made as we move along. You've got a grievance process if someone has a question or someone has a complaint. Will we ever completely get it done? Who knows? But we are working toward it every year, and as long as we've got a document like that to refer to and to change, I think we're going to continue to make positive progress every year and get our streets, our sidewalks, our curb cuts more ADA accessible. And that's essentially what we're trying to do here. So I would say that I'm in favor of recommending the adoption of both one and two and sending it probably to the whole council.
Regular agenda.
Being presented to both committees today.
Yeah. Yeah, well, a couple of different thoughts. I understood you to say that the majority of this is going to be covered under grants as they are required, one way or the other.
I'll do my best.
Do your best. And as an example, the old Safe Routes to School program would have actually been part of complying with this particular program, too.
Yes. Which is now Community Choices, and you'll see a contract on the next agenda.
So we need, I mean, this is a resolution. It's going to be adopted, so it has to go on the regular agenda.
No, resolutions can be done on consent.
This is going to Public Works and Finance also, so the whole council will see it, other than Walter and...
Agreed, but part of the situation is we're trying to raise public awareness of it as well, so that was a reason to bring it to...
I think it's great if it's on the regular agenda.
And I'll put together a brief representation with a PowerPoint so that we can move forward with it more quickly. I did receive an email from Walter this morning saying that he had no changes or no comments.
Thank you. I think it's terrific that we're moving this forward, and it's nice to see that we have a plan, because I think many of us in the community wonder, "Well, when are we going to, you know, fix that sidewalk or get this thing built?" And if we at least have a plan for making that happen, we've got a route for getting there.
And this will be a working document, so...
Yep, of course. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leeta.
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is number five, Off-Leash Area Proposal for Mountain View
Okay. Well, thank you again. This will be an interesting one for you. One of the things that was in our master plan, the 2013 Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was adopted, was that we would explore our various parks and properties for opportunities for off-leash areas or additional dog parks. And back in, I think, February, staff was approached by some folks that would like to have an off-leash area at Mountain View Park. And, well, it wasn't exactly on our agenda at the time, but didn't seem like any reason not to go forward with that. So through an assessment of our various parks and properties that we had, and it was, you know, basic, it wasn't very thorough at the time, trying to move this through, that Mountain View Park and possibly Anderson Frontier Park were our two most viable areas that could support an off-leash area. And so through that, this had gone through with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they are supportive of this. And this was also reviewed by the Chief of Police and also through our legal department. And I think that we've got a fairly good project here. The current ordinance basically says that the only place that you can have dogs off-leash on city property is at the city dog park. And if you've been there, I mean, it is just overused. It's too small. And so it's key that we do search for additional places for dogs. The proposed changes to the ordinance that we're introducing is that the field area at Mountain View Park be designated as an off-leash area. And this is basically at all times, except when we have activities on the field or when it's closed, posted closed for weather-related reasons. And then, of course, all the other rules existing with the city code would still apply. Sorry, this is a little bit small. Look bigger on my screen. Besides the ordinance, there's just general use rules that need to apply. Most are common sense, but we would have these posted at both entrances to the field area at Mountain View Park. And mainly, the, I'm just going to call these the owners, it could be owners or handlers. But they're legally responsible for their dog's behavior and any injuries or damages that they cause. It's that way now anyway. By entering the off-leash area, they're entered at their own risk and abide by their rules. Dogs must be leashed until they're in the field area. And then they also cannot leave their dogs in the off-leash area unattended and/or out of sight. And we also encourage people to... And, uh, we also encourage, uh, people to, uh, call in or let the city know, uh, if there's violations to that. Um, the dog owners, they'll be required to carry the necessary equipment to clean up after their dogs, which is also a rule that's presently in place. Um, even though their dogs might be off-leash, they're required to carry a leash with them. Um, and then all dogs have to be under voice control at all times. And, uh, aggressive dogs are not permitted. And, uh, they must all be licensed and vaccinated. Uh, dogs younger than four months aren't allowed in the off-leash area. And that dogs in heat are not permitted in the off-leash area. And, uh, just a special note that this is, uh, just for, uh, Mountain View Park. It's not for any other piece of property that the city owns and, uh...
It's only a specific part of Mountain View Park.
And it's just the, the field area.
It's not the playground area, it's not the...
Correct.
The path area.
Correct. And, uh, where the parking lot. And, uh, this thing, uh, it's, uh, I mentioned earlier, it's, uh, in our master plan. Um, and I'll get to this, uh, in our next segment is talking about the actual ordinance. Um, and, um, that's the request. And, uh, here to answer any questions with that, I also, there are some people in the audience, um, that were the, uh, the folks that actually proposed this. Uh, if you have any specific questions of them as well.
Um, I, I think I have a question for you first, which is the, um, there's a scheduling component of this. Dogs off-leash only when there's not a soccer game being scheduled. So how do, how does a person find out what the schedule is?
Well, we, of course, we, we have our schedules, we'll have it online as well as we'll have a, uh, if you've ever seen it, over at, um, um, Euler Field, we'll have, uh, the schedules posted so that people can see. And they put that out, it's a week in advance.
But they don't need to go to Euler Field to see what's at Mountain View Park?
No, 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 this'll be posted specifically for this field at Mountain View Park.
Okay, so they can go and see and know what the schedule is?
Yes.
Is the schedule online?
It will be online as well.
Like, can somebody look at, look at their computer and say, oh, now's a good time to go take Fido over to the park and then go?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then if there's a rain out?
Rain outs, well...
Where could go?
Cause like if... If there's no activity, then it's, it's open. Um, so, um, even though, um, I mean, I don't know that we'll go as far as trying to communicate with all the dog owners in town that we've had a rain out. Um, they can look to see, um, if it's...
I guess what I mean is if people are learning that there's a rain out anyway, we, we publish a rain out schedule.
Yes. A lot of times when we have a rain out, that they will post the field closed though.
Okay. But on the website, does it say if there's a rain out?
And this is a will, not, not does.
Does, okay. The future, um, shall or will or whatever.
We do have rain, a rain outline, yes.
Okay.
And we'll make sure that they, they can look at that, one way or another.
Okay. Thanks. I'm trying to understand the scheduling piece of it.
I think the scheduling, as, as it's written out, is pretty acceptable. I mean, I understand what you're saying about a rain out, but I think that there's an awful lot of effort can go into trying to identify when a rainstorm's going to come and then try to notify everybody that there's a rain out and then all of a sudden there's not a rain out. I, I think that's a lot of needless effort myself.
Well, we, we do post the rain out for the sports people anyway.
That's what I'm saying.
I don't know if our IS folks can make it so it automatically clicks over to, to this website or not, but we'll make sure that one way or another, if they, if they're that interested. And another thing too, even though it might say that it's scheduled and they happen to be walking their dog there on leash and they see there's nothing going on there, if it's not posted closed, it's, uh, it's open.
I, I guess my point on this is it, it seems like so often we try to put everything down solid in black and white, you know, and, and we don't allow any common sense involved. And, and this is an area where a lot of common sense can be involved in the usage of it. The hours that we've got down here, if we decide to accept that, I think is a really good starting point. And then just use, let's use a little common sense. If, if there's a big rainstorm going on and there's been a rain out and there's nobody out there, then it makes sense to me that if you want to take your dog out in the rain and turn him loose, go for it. But I just, I, I, I get kind of frustrated with us trying to regulate absolutely everything right down to the last dime. It gets pretty hard and it becomes an awful lot of frustration for staff as well as time consuming. I think that's my point.
And I, and I need to apologize. I, in your packets, you've got a, uh, the map of this and, uh, for some reason, it is no longer on my PowerPoint. This was printed from the PowerPoint.
Yeah, we don't, we don't do that.
Anyway.
My only, uh, question or concern has to do with cleaning up an area that is going to be used for soccer or lacrosse, uh, after dogs have been running loose on it and the owner for some reason decided it just really isn't necessary to clean up after Fido. Um, and some eight-year-old kid...
Slides in it.
Slides through it. Um, well, you're going to have one upset mother. And, uh, do you have a response to that or...
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Um, sometimes dogs will be out doing their business regardless of this rule. Um, we also have people that are using this now. Um, I don't, I would not anticipate this being any more of an issue than, if this is passed, than, than we have now. We also have a pretty, uh, well, just short of adopt a, adopt a park group. And, uh, like I said, some of them are in the audience today who have pledged to, uh, do their best to continue educating, uh, the public that are out there using it. Um, and if we see that it becomes more of a problem, then, then, then it's acceptable, then we'll step up other measures to, uh, to help with that as well.
Wayne? Has there been any, I'm sorry, any progress made on, you know, teaching the dogs to, you know, take care of their own business a little bit better than they do?
I wish I had that photo to put up.
Yeah, that would've been a good one to include in there.
Yeah, we have a dog actually scooping up their own stuff, but, um...
What I was going to say Dwight was, I think that that's, uh, that's an excellent tactic. Uh, folks that own dogs, that walk their dogs are pretty vocal when they see somebody that lets their dog take a dump and they don't clean up after it. They get right in their face. My wife has done that a couple of different times with people. And, uh, I think that's going to be the answer to this because if it doesn't happen and we have this problem with, with, uh, dog feces in particular that's not been cleaned up about the time we have baseball and soccer, then it's going to go away and it's going to go back and it's going to be very strongly enforced. I could see that probably happening. So, uh, I think that, uh, I think this is very workable and, um, that the folks that are going to be monitoring that, I think they'll monitor it.
Gary?
Yeah, I think that's the point, Wayne. As Dwight indicated, other cities have this in place. It seems to work okay in those other cities. Uh, I had some visitors to my office today, talked about it a little bit. Seems to me that if the council does want to implement this as a change in the ordinance, like everything else, we'll see how it works. If it doesn't pan out and enforcement measures don't work, then my anticipation is somebody will come in here and ask the council to repeal it and we'll go back to where we were. And so it seems like if, uh, if Dwight's convinced, Parks and Rec's convinced that, um, it's doable, then it seems to me, nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Well, in fact, you know, I mean, Parks and Rec, that's utilized in the summertime for all kinds of youth activities. And so, you know, you're not going to recommend this if you didn't think it was going to work.
Correct. Well, and I personally had some rough experiences with dogs leaving treasures out on this particular park. Um, I was out cross-country skiing once and there were all sorts of little...
Calling cards.
Calling cards all over the place. And there were some people that were, you know, had dogs there and were, you know, taking care of their own dogs, but these were maybe left by some previous dogs.
It'd have been coyotes, Tom, you don't know.
Could've been. They didn't look like it. They don't eat that much dog food. But I think, anyway, so that's one issue I think that we're going to have to be vigilant about or the owners are going to have to be vigilant about. And I, I think I'm also a little bit worried about the extra friendly dogs that come up to the kids that, or the adults that don't necessarily want the extra friendly dogs coming up to them. It's not the vicious dogs that I'm as worried about, it's the very happy dogs that, you know, run up to people that might not want to be approached. So, but we'll see. I mean, I guess we'll see as, as, um, both Wayne and Gary have pointed out, we can see this happen and move on. I just continue to have reservations, but I can see that it's...
It'll be an interesting experiment. I think it's worthwhile to try.
Good to see how it, how it works.
Well, I'd like to recommend approval, move this on to full council.
Yeah, I think we're going to send this on to the full council.
Okay. Thank you. Regular agenda.
Yep, thank you. And then there was a next piece on, uh, following right on the heels of this, next agenda item is ordinance amendment for Title 10, Chapter 5 leash law with, also with Dwight.
Yes, and of course, this is, uh, basically putting into effect what, what we were just talking about. The highlights of this ordinance, uh, we had the definition of dog park, handler and off-leash area. Um, also, um, on Section 5-5, the dog at large and tethering, we added, uh, it was just for the city, um, dog park and we added or as an off-leash area. And then also, um, added a new Section 5-11, which is off-leash area limitations. And that basically just talks about what we had in here with, uh, the aggressive dogs. Um, and also, um, uh, the dogs outside the per, dogs outside the permitted boundaries of the leash area who are not on a leash shall be considered dogs at large. And then also, um...
So, sorry, any accompanied dog is considered at large? So if there's a, if there's a dog that's not accompanied in the off-leash area, that's not okay?
Correct.
Okay. Um, when I read it, it sounded like if somebody leaves their dog, that's not okay. But there could be times when dogs run and show up there on their own. And those would also be not okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's, it's interesting to note, if you take a look at the note from Chief Duke, that from March of 2008 to February of 2014, there's only been 13 dog calls for that entire period of time for Mountain View Park. So, pretty low-risk area.
Might be okay. All right, so I think we, I'll, of course, pass this on as well to the full council.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so those are all the regular agenda items for today's meeting. We have two reports scheduled. The first one was, is with Kathleen Burns and it's the Moscow Farmers Market update.
Thanks Dwight.
Thanks Dwight.
That's what we deal with the most. And, potatoes.
It's a dog's life.
Potatoes. Now at the farmers market.
No, there won't be tomatoes this Saturday.
Potatoes, no.
Tomatoes, they're not in season.
How about potatoes?
Uh, yep.
See, peas?
There'll be flowers, there'll be starts, there'll be plant starts. You can plant your garden. So, um, I just wanted to bring everybody's attention, the market starts this Saturday. We have new vendors in the market. Metalar Heritage Farm has been a walk-on vendor for two years and she's going to be a seasoned vendor. Goat milk soap, she's out towards Troy. Lodge Pole, Artful Eats and Curiosities, those are a couple that graduated from WSU and U of I, went over to Seattle to work in restaurants and now they're developing their whole line of food. And then Hubble Burger is a local guy named Wolf. We're actually going to have homemade burgers and homemade fries at the market. Mila is a new, uh, food vendor as well, which is Indian cuisine. Lucky Dog Lotions, this is a pretty big deal. It's not lotion for dogs. It's just a name, but it is lotions.
Lip care for dogs?
Yeah.
You're going to open up that at the park?
Little lip balm, sunscreen for dogs, yeah. So, the, the cool thing is, is this is an Idaho Preferred vendor. So this is a vendor, this is our only Idaho Preferred vendor in our market that has gone through all the hoops with, uh, Department of Commerce and down in Boise and export.
I think you'd better then explain what Idaho Preferred Vendor is.
Well, Idaho Preferred is a program through Department of Ag with the state of Idaho and you can get on a list and go through all these hoops to be a part of a trade with the state. And, um, this is the first vendor we've ever had apply that has been an Idaho Preferred vendor. So it's a pretty big deal.
Yeah, thanks.
And no, it's not for dogs. The Himalayan chai guys, um, they've been walk-on vendors last year and this year they're going to be a seasoned vendor. Um, we have a sister to the family of the Boothmans, Calhoun Family Fruit, that'll be coming. Um, Swallow Tail Flowers, which is really Ruth Griffiths' niece who took over her flower business. And then we have a new farmer from Avon, Turmeline Farms. We have several vendors that are retiring and I wanted to highlight Linda Christensen here. She was with us for 37 years with the Moscow Farmers Market. So this is one of your vendors that started in our parking lot here.
She made all these jams.
Yep, yep. So we're trying to talk her into being a walk-on vendor, but we're not having any luck yet. But she's over in Europe, so maybe when she gets back, she'll want to do some jamming. Also, the Genesee Dallas, jamming. The Genesee, yeah, the Genesee Dallas Hermitage folks, um, are retiring. They might come back and just sell garlic, um, later on in the season. Uh, Jerry Lee Farms is going to come in as a walk-on to sell wool, but doesn't want to have a seasoned spot. Perry's Garden, Mr. Coachman has retired. And then, um, Mrs. Moffett Organics from Down in Wawaui Canyon, her daughter moved away and she doesn't have a helper to come up to market. So we might see her as a walk-on. So right now to our count, we have 59 seasoned vendors paperwork in. We have 26 walk-ons paperwork completely in. They paid their $15 registration, all their tax forms and everything is in. We have 126 walk-ons that have been approved for the season, but they don't have all their paperwork in yet. And then we have two kids that already have all their paperwork in. So it's pretty big.
That's great.
Um, we have several vendors that went retail, so now they don't need the market. And Harvest Ridge Organics might come back as a walk-on. Um, Parlour Brick Oven Pizza, they're a little busy with weddings, so they're completely booked. And then Old World Oil, Camelina Oil from Ritzville, they've gone way more retail. So they might come back and, as a walk-on as well.
Has Parlour started spelling their name this way? They were like without vowels, P-R-L-R, but is this correct?
No, I think that's the way we got it on the paperwork.
Okay.
But I can stand to be corrected.
Well, I've only seen it the other way, but...
Yeah. Um, so this is our, um, social media update. DJ put this together. Um, we started out with 50 fans and 11 and now we're up to 1,528 fans as of today on Facebook. And we'll be doing our weekly posts, starting tomorrow with the music, the events, the vendor of the week. This week is Leah Simple from Pokey Creek Farms up in Santa. Um, and then we'll start posting all the vendor blasts and other news with the market. Um, and then out of season, we do updates on what the farmers are doing, what different folks are doing. We also have other social media outlets. Um, we have a Twitter that Barry uses on Saturdays to post if strawberries are in. Yelp, TripAdvisor, Four Square Local Harvest, Visit Idaho. We've had quite a few hits, um, with the Department of Commerce. And, um, Food Hub and then FarmersMarket.com. And then we'll also be in the Farmers Market, uh, Nationwide Coalition because we just got another grant, so we'll be posted. another grant, so we'll be posted. Amanda's in the audience. She can come up to explain all this, but this is Amanda Argona, our AmeriCorps, and she's been doing all these presentations since October. And she's presented here in October and then again in December. And then Amanda has done some outreach in the community. And these are the different groups in our community that she's spoken to with all her data and statistics on her need and seed study. And which ones are coming up? Where are you going next week?
Next Monday is Rotary over at Best Western and then that same, I believe it's Tuesday, the Moscow Lions Club.
Yep. So from her last presentation, someone from the URA asked that she present to the Sustainable Environmental Commission. So again, if anyone can recommend a group to present to, we'd be glad to set it up. So, do you have anything else you want to add?
Um, yeah.
Go to the next slide?
Yeah. I would just like to add that, that list that Kathleen had pulled up, she just asked for community presentations, so it's not an exhaustive list of what I've been doing as far as my AmeriCorps position. In October, the Sustainability Center asked me to come speak at their National Food Day event on campus and I've been doing a lot of events on campus. The Health and Wellness Fair, I just did the Sustainability Showcase. I'm going to be tabling with some other local organizations this Friday to help promote the market, to get students in there. And that's kind of been my other task is outreach and networking with the University of Idaho. And homecoming last year was a big deal, getting the farmers market a float space.
So, does that mean you're going to be wearing the strawberry costume again?
Probably.
Okay.
No one wanted to wear it last year.
But she did great. And she also wore that costume in Boise, right?
Yes. Well, I didn't. Another girl did with the PCI AmeriCorps. Yeah. I gave costumes to wear.
Yes. So that's...
She's a young lady.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, she's been busy. So these are dates that have come and gone, so we've been a little busy, but we had a Craft and Food Jury February 25th. I think Wayne, you were at that one. And also April 18th. We had our Season Vendor Orientation April 17th. This room was packed wall-to-wall with vendors. And then we just had a Walk-on Vendor Orientation last week. And when we do our vendor orientations, Paul Wykowski came this year to talk to the seasoned vendors about police services on Saturday involving the market. We had Joe Williams talk about tent weights and fire extinguishers and open flame. Nancy Becker with the Health Department presents on food and health law.
Patricia Gilmore.
And Patricia Gilmore came from Lewiston with the State Tax Commission. So we bring in everybody that regulates portions of, whether it's food in Idaho or tax in Idaho. We also this year had the Department of Agriculture come for the first time. So that was really great because Steve Barnes has an office over in the post office on the second floor. And a lot of vendors have different questions about different products in the market and so he's a really great resource. So this year, for the first time, we're going to do a children's vendor orientation on May 15th with kids and their parents. We're going to do a book drop backpack flyer to all the schools, including the private schools. And we have the Adams Kids who have been in the market four years selling their gift cards, greeting cards. And they're actually going to put the orientation on. So there'll be kids talking to kids. So that's coming up May 15th. This year we got a couple grants. You heard from Jen on the High Five Grant through the Blue Cross Foundation of Idaho. We'll be doing a passport program, cooking and activity classes with Eat Smart Idaho. We're hiring a nutrition intern from the University of Idaho. And we'll be doing tasting and active travel. And then on your right, it's back. They announced it on Friday. We're pretty proud of ourselves. There's 50 markets now in the United States and we were one of 30 markets last year and this year we're one of 50 markets in the US to get this grant. So automatically it's like 42 boxes of product and canners. And this year they're going to be doing food savers. So Barry's planning on bringing in a hind end of an elk or a deer and sharpening knives and doing a little demonstration in the fall. So it's me, she's...
If Don got an elk, then he'd...
Or Don. Don might help out there. Yep. Or Redner, you never know. So I didn't want to bore you with the schedule, but we have an Excel spreadsheet that goes through 26 weeks. The music's already booked for 26 weeks. This weekend is Bike for Life and the Palouse Prize Ride. That's being coordinated by Eric Newell. We have International Migratory Bird Day coming up, Worldwide Knit and Public Day, the Great Moscow Food Drive. McConnell Mansion came in today and they want to participate in the Smithsonian's National Event, which is called Raise It Up, which we, is Flag Day, which is June 14th. And American Legion is going to be demonstrating folding flags, care and maintenance of flags, collecting flags for burning. But then also McConnell's going to get involved and they're going to recite not the Constitution, but something related to Flag Day. So we're going to participate with them in Smithsonian. And then Amanda is going to do her final study, the Feed Study, in July. She'll be looking for volunteers. So if Walter's paying attention, he might want to volunteer again. Some of the commissions are in the city tent, signed up, Moscow Farmers Market Commission, Tree Commission, Paradise Path, Human Rights Commission. Sustainable Environmental will be visiting us for the first time. And then the Moscow Police Department will be doing the take-back of medications and prescriptions. And then the best news of all...
Barry Baguera.
Barry is back and life is good. So, any questions? Any answers?
I don't know. Amanda, have you, have you spoken to any of the service clubs like Lions or Rotary?
I am, next week.
Great. Okay. I think that's...
Two weeks, two Tuesdays?
Um, no, next Monday and next Tuesday.
Take quarters. Make sure Kathleen gives you quarters.
Quarters?
Oh...
No, you don't have to worry. I'm waiting on, you don't have to worry about quarters. Maybe the other clubs.
Maybe. I don't know.
You!
We also have Rotaries featured as a walk-on vendor in the market.
Yeah.
Tattle Corn.
Good. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is another report and it's the Development Community Input Process Report with Bill Belnet. It's an input process report.
Afternoon.
I was at a...
That one's not working.
Meeting with...
Oh.
Maybe it is not working.
It is.
Now it's...
That sound...
It sounds like...
Use this one.
Sounds a little funny.
That sounds funky.
Sounds like tin.
Yeah.
Let's move over to a seat.
Thanks, Bill.
Good afternoon. This is just kind of a report back to the council, to the committee this afternoon on some recent public outreach and efforts that our department and Public Works Department has been engaged in over the last couple of months. So just to provide a little bit of background, in the fall of last year, there appeared to be some concerns that we were hearing from the development community about the development process as a whole. There were a few projects that, there were some issues that had arisen and I guess there were just some general concerns out there in the development community. In January of this year, we mailed out about 250 invitations to all contractors, architects, engineers, and developers in the community, anyone that we had contact information for, inviting them to a public input meeting that was held on February 5th to provide an opportunity for them to share their concerns and for us to hear their concerns. The meeting, we had probably 35 to 40 people, maybe, maybe 30, 35 that attended the meeting. The comments that were received during the meeting were recorded and then we kind of categorized them depending upon where they kind of fit within the review, within the development process. So we had comments that related to the plan review process, those that related to inspections, some related to development standards. There were several that were kind of general customer service comments and then we had kind of another category for things that didn't fit within any of those individual categories. Following that meeting, we asked those in attendance if they'd be interested in assisting us to work through those comments and look at things that we could possibly look at improving in our process. I think we had 12 or 13 individuals that volunteered to help us in that effort.
Contractor type of...
Contractors, developers, property owners, and engineers and architects on the project. So we had actually many more people than we had anticipated that were interested in helping us in that process. We held three meetings of that subcommittee on the March 6th, the 25th, and on April 9th. And we worked through all of those individual comments. We had a pretty verbatim record of the input session that happened in February and we kind of went through all the comments. Some of them may have related to projects that were from five to seven years ago, some were more current projects. But we really kind of worked through all of those to look at and really have an opportunity to talk about things that they were seeing, what were some options of how we could improve our process and to be able to work through that in a small group format. We then developed some preliminary recommendations, which are being distributed right now to the subcommittee members for their review and comment. And those generally focus on things such as improvement in some of the plan review processes. There were, in some departments, there were large numbers of individuals that may have been reviewing the plans. There may have been four individuals within one department that were reviewing the plans. And so we wanted to work on trying to consolidate that list, both to reduce the plan review time as well as the potential for redundant comments. There were also some training that we needed to do within our internal staff to make sure that the comments that we're making were concise so the design professional could understand them and to clearly differentiate between things that were maybe just suggestions as compared to actual code requirements that needed to be modified. So we had a list of three recommendations underneath plan review process. The next step was to really talk about establishing plan review time targets. Now we, generally that wasn't a comment that we heard that there was an excessive review time, other than maybe in a few instances, but we internally wanted to look at establishing formal guidelines of how long should a single-family home plan take, or how long should a new commercial project take, or how long should a tenant improve it project take. And so we've developed a matrix of those review timeframes through the committee. We also talked about the plan review process and what do we need on our side in order to make a thorough and complete and timely review of those plans and to try to avoid the timely process of corrections and resubmission and corrections and resubmission. So we committed to providing and developing some detailed plans and middle checklists so they'd know what information they need to submit with the projects. And so we worked through that. We also had, which was the enhanced middle requirement documentation. We also, there was a request to try to increase the documentation from pre-submission meeting conferences. And those can take the form of a very informal, where somebody brings in something sketched out on a napkin and asks about what were some of the general parameters they need to be considering for their project, to fully design plans that may come in and do a pre-submittal meeting. And we talked about the various levels of information and determinations we can provide then based upon that level of information. There was also a fair number of comments regarding the street closure process and that happens frequently in the development where you're needing to access utilities that may be underneath the roadway, or you're having to close a sidewalk to establish a driveway approach. And the prior street closure process was fairly cumbersome and took a fair amount of time to get through, as well as looking at how much traffic signage needed to be placed. So there are some elements that were recommended with regards to street closure process, although some of those include developing some typical standards, traffic control drawings, so that they didn't have to go to a traffic control specialist to develop those plans every time, as well as streamlining the street closure process and not requiring it to go through all of the individuals. There were some departments such as Police and Fire that every individual's street closure was having to go through. And that was delaying, that was extending that review period. Now it's more of an advisory measure that they get reviewed and approved by the Public Works Department and then Police and Fire are advised of when the closure is going to occur, unless it was something that was fairly significant. But a typical utility connection didn't necessarily need a police review on every instance. There were also some general customer service enhancements. There were some comments made regarding the time and returning of phone calls and some other general customer service elements. And so we've got some recommendations regarding that category as well. So our next steps, once we get the comments back from the subcommittee, is that we'll distribute a summary of these actions to the attendees of the February 5th meeting, just to let them know that the subcommittee's kind of worked through the comments that we received. These are the preliminary recommendations that they've made. So then we will begin as staff to begin to implement these actions and monitor them over the course of the next six months or so. And then what we're anticipating is we'll convene a follow-up meeting this fall with the same development community to check in, see how we're doing, seek additional input, see where we may be improved, are there other areas we need to continue to work on, but to help improve and kind of maintain the conversation, the dialogue and communication between the farmers that are involved in the development process, which predominantly end up as Fire, Public Works, and Community Development, and make sure that we're doing the best we can. So we'll be working on implementing those over the course of the summer, watching and seeing how it goes and we can report back to the council as it progresses.
Well, I'm really good to see, really glad to see this, Bill. Particularly where you managed to get this together over the last part of the winter for the construction season of this summer and see how it works out and then following up on it this fall. I think that's, I think that's been a great program that you've put together and I thank you and I think, I think our mayor was probably behind this a little bit too, kind of prodded us along. Thank you, Bill, for that. So I think our contractors will be very appreciative of our efforts to try to streamline and the process and open lines of communication a little bit better.
It sounds great. I meant that we're making sure that we're communicating well and dispelling any myths where that can happen and improving our process when that can happen. So, that's great. Did you have anything else?
You guys covered it real well and so did Bill.
Thank you. Thanks for doing that. So if we hear anybody that's grumbling, we should send them your way.
They go his way anyhow.
They go to his way anyway. Okay, well, I think that's, that brings us to the end of the agenda, so we are now adjourned. Thank you.